I am overwhelmed and I'm sure that my colleagues and friends here present are equally overwhelmed. To see and witness that we still have this retinue of quality Nigerians in this great party speaks volumes. And we have, the Board of Trustees has always contended that the PDP shall not die. And this is manifesting itself now. I'm seeing our former governors here present, men of timber and caliber. The secretary of the Board of Trustees, the chairman, ably represented, the national chairman, ably represented by the acting national secretary, all the other members of the National Working Committee, our great nominees, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. Like I said earlier, honestly, I am overwhelmed. The god of PDP never sleeps and will never sleep. It is a great honour and privilege to stand before you today as we come together to witness the inauguration of new members of new members from their respective states and zones to the Board of Trustees of our great party, the People's Democratic Party. In line with section 32,1, F and G of the party's constitution as amended in 2027. This occasion is not only a celebration of new beginning, but also a reaffirmation of our collective commitment to the values and principles that define our party. Today, we are welcoming distinguished group of individuals whose dedication, experience and unwavering loyalty to the PDP have earned them a place on this prestigious board. Your appointment to the Board of Trustees is a call to service and a call to serve. A call to uphold the integrity, unity and vision of our party as we continue to strive for a more prosperous and democratic Nigeria. As custodians of the party's conscience, the BOT plays a critical role in providing wise counsel, fostering stability and ensuring that our decisions align with the core objectives of the PDP. Your role as members of the board is not only to guide and support the leadership of the party, but also to act as a stabilizing force in times of challenges and uncertainties. Today's inauguration is particularly significant as we prepare to navigate the evolving political landscape and work tirelessly to restore the PDP as the foremost party in Nigeria. The task ahead is demanding, but with unity, determination and unwavering commitment to the principles of democracy, we shall overcome. To our new members, I urge you to remember that your presence on the board is not just a position of honour, but a position of responsibility. It is a call to serve with integrity, transparency and unwavering dedication to the collective good of our party and our nation. Let us continue to work together to uphold the vision of our founding fathers and to build a stronger, more inclusive and more progressive PDP. Together, we shall lead our party to new heights of success and relevance in the Nigerian political landscape. Thank you all for your attention. May God bless the People's Democratic Party and Brazil.
Thank you very much Chairman Sir.
On item six of the agenda in which the secretary, His Excellency Senator Ahmed McAfee will introduce or present to the board the new members. This is very critical. You know, in the sense that if we had the resources, we would have made, if I knew that we were going to have such retinue of members still in this party, maybe we would have carried this life so that the world will see that the PDP is still very much alive. But do that as it may, I implore the the newsmen here to do their very best to capture all the faces, you know, here present. It does show that all these speculations about movements and defections, you know, you don't have them here in the board. And once the board is alive, PDP is alive. So I'll go around later to to welcome all our great leaders here, starting from my brother Enugu governor down to Shakarao to Otom and I'm so, I'm so overwhelmed. I am very happy, I'm very happy that 2027 PDP shall rise again. Having said so, may I humbly in, you know, request that you please do the needful item number six. Through that we recognize some dignitaries, but it would be very appropriate for you to get up individually, if you may, without due respect, to introduce yourselves one by one and then you, the secretary of the Board of Trustees, His Excellency Senator McAfee will hand over your letters, you know, to you one by one. If you cannot get here for whatever reason, the MC can take the letter to where you are seated. We're not saying you should, you know, but then the introduction is very important so we know there are so many faces that we don't know here. For now, give them their letters. They have been excellently introduced by the secretary of the Board of Trustees. Currently join me, put your hands together for all the new members. You must raise them sir. I know why, I'm addressing my father, Professor Jorikana. Yes, certain things can be done very frivolously, but it's for a particular reason. I may, I'll come around and explain to you, but you are a father, founding father here. I know that's where, you know, you are with clean mind, open mind. There is a particular reason why we say let us, so that by, you know, at the fullness of time, we will know what to say to one another. Thank you very much.
Okay, they want to, Chief Otom to introduce himself.
Thank you very much sir. Please sir, if you can make a little adjustment, coming all the way from Makodi for this inauguration, I think I deserve to be honoured. My people are waiting to see that I have received a letter from the chairman. So give back this letter to the chairman. If no other person is interested, me I'm interested. Let me come and collect it for the chairman.
Follow in Senator Sanusi Dagash. If you're here, follow. His Excellency Wright Honorable, if after His Excellency Fine Uguai, okay, that's Honorable Jones Rurinieri. And here is His Excellency Ifai Guguei. Alajinasi Umar Roni, make your way. Senator Garba Yakublado, make your way. Dr Benjamin Ezra Dickey from Kebi State, make your way. Chief Mrs Onikebo Shodi, start making your way ma'am, from Lagos State. Chief servant, His Excellency Dr Moaz Babangidali, you please sir, make your way. This is Chief Mrs Onikebo Shodi.
If I saw, if I saw, I have to come all the way from Lagos, where they think it will like something where people have got one that you don't become to anywhere but PDP.
Thank you ma'am. She said.
I've been in politics for over 50 years and I'm still loyal and busy with it.
She says she's been in politics for 50 years. She's here to demonstrate that Lagos State is still PDP in their domain. Thank you ma'am. His Excellency Babangidali, please Honorable Oladipo Adebu to please make your way. While Honorable Oladipo is making his way, Alaja Chief Mrs Atunuke Oyawe, please make your way. Honorable Oladipo Adebu to 23 candidates of Ogus State. Alaja Chief Miss Ambassador Dobagudu Hes from Platte, please make your way sir. As you pick your letter and go back, sign the acknowledgement inside that letter and return to the secretary. Engineer Belo Suliman, come forward. While Engineer Belo Suliman is picking his letter, he's from Sokoto. His Excellency Architect Dara Ishaku from Taraba, former governor of Taraba State, are you here? Let Honorable Sharif Abdullahi from Yobe come forward. Dr Lubna Mohammed Ghosol. This is Dr Lubna Mohammed Ghosol. Zanfora State. Alaji Ibrahim Bikman, this month, the end of the state nominees, then we go to the zonal nominees. Professor Ganyel Lombin from Platte, please make your way. Professor Ganyel Lombin from Platte State, if you're not here, let Honorable Aliu Joshua, Professor Ganyel Lombin. And that's Honorable Aliu Joshua Kaima from FCT. Her Excellency Senator Zainab Kuray, former First Lady of Lagos State. Please follow in her, or the Honorable Nimota Ibrahim from Quara State, please also make your way. These are zonal nominees for North Central Zone. For the Northwest Zone, Alaja Mukhtar Luga from Zanfora State. Make your way, Alaja Mukhtar Luga. This is Alaja Mukhtar Luga. For Sokoto State, Ajia Zainab Galadima. His Excellency, former governor of Kanal State, Senator Ibrahim Shakarao. Please, can we have a standing hall, please? That's all for the Northwest Zone. For the Southeast Zone, Chief Mrs Chinwe Awara, state. Follow in Honorable Fassiu Bakkeni Ogus State.
This is the height of today's business. As you can see, our new entrants, new nominees are here armed with their, with their letters. Armed with their letters. So with the, I as the chairman of the Board of Trustees, would like to invoke the powers conferred on me and the leadership of the board, in this case distinguished Senator McAfee, to inaugurate and admit these eminent Nigerians. You see, the politics of Nigeria started with PDP. The politics of Nigeria started with PDP and you can see all of us here beaming. We know what it takes to resolve our problems. And these eminent Nigerians, ladies and gentlemen, have been admitted into the Board of Trustees today to come and assist, to come and, you know, impact their wisdom on us so that we'll be able to come out with success in 2027 and beyond. Having said so, let me congratulate you all for finding time and for believing in the people, in the People's Democratic Party. God will give you strength, the wisdom and the resources to continue to attend our meetings. We don't hold meetings regularly, we hold meetings, you know, when necessary, in accordance with our constitution and when challenges arise. So we are watching what is happening. Some people would say that the Board of Trustees is slow. We're not slow. We are being diplomatic, we don't want to rock the boat. We will always align with our governors, provided we are duly consulted. And those of us, thank God we have governors, former governors in the army, you know, who will continue to guide us. But I can assure you, ladies and gentlemen and Nigerians, the followers that PDP is not dead, PDP has risen and PDP will win in 2027. Thank you, thank you so much and congratulations. Maybe, maybe my vote of thanks from, vote of thanks from, okay, you can do the vote of thanks.
Presented by the acting national secretary, BOT members, other members of the working committee, nominees as BOT members soon to be inaugurated. Ladies and gentlemen, this ceremony, this event is a ceremonial one. So I will, with the permission of the chairman, call out the names of those whose nominations are coming, nominations are still in process, where received, are vetted and they are dealt with accordingly. So far, Mr Chairman, we have received majority of nominations and some are on their way or under process. And when ready, they will equally be invited to be inaugurated as we're inaugurating this. Mr Chairman's, in Mr Chairman's wisdom, he thought we should not wait until everything has come in and vetted because there are critical meetings, snake and other events. We should not deny majority of nominations that are coming from participating in party activities. So we should do this and when the next one is ready equally, do it anytime it is ready. Therefore, these are the names of the state nominees that have come in and vetted. Honorable Awaltukur from Adama, Chiefs, His Excellency, Chief Dr Samuel Otto from Benue, Senator Mohamed Sanusi Dagash from Borno, His Excellency Barista Ephiong Chafam from Cross River, Chief Obasi Elebe from Eboni, His Excellency Chief Lucky Ibnidion from Edo, Honorable Ojo Michael Oké from Ekiti, His Excellency Wright Honorable Ifai Ugwe from my state Inubu. For those who don't know that, so I did my scandiscope, so I call Enugu my state. Right Honorable Jones Oye Rere from Imo, Alajinasi Umar Roni from Jigawa, Senator Garba Yakublado from Kazana, Dr Benjamin Ezra Dickey from Kebi, Chief Mrs Onikepo Oshodi from Lagos, Dr Moaz Babangidali, Chief Servant, Honorable Oladipo Adebu to from Ogum, the PDP rock of mine in Ogum. Alaja Chief Mrs Atuniki Olawi from Oshun, His Excellency Engineer Hamid Badomosi from Oyo, Ambassador Dobagudu Hershey from Platte, I saw him. Engineer Belo Suliman from Sokoto, His Excellency Architect Darius Ishaku Taraba, Honorable Sharif Abdullahi from Yobe, Dr Lubna Mohammed Ghosol from Zanfora, Alaja Ibrahim Bikho, Alaja Ibrahim Bikho from FCT. The zonal nominees that have come in so far and vetted from North Central, His Excellency Lebron Maku from Nasara, though he's representing a zone, zonal nominations are zonal. It is the zone that decide which state, what goes to which state. But as far as BOT is concerned, it's zonal issue. Professor Ganyel Lombin from Platte, Honorable Aliu Joshua Kaima, FCT, His Excellency Senator Zainab Kuray, Nijah, Honorable Nimota Ibrahim Quara. From Northwest, Senator Mustafa Kabir, Jigawa, His Excellency Senator Ibrahim Shakarao, Colonel, Alaja Mukhtar Luga from Zanfora, Ajia Zainab Galadima, Sokoto. From Southeast, Dr Remi Okoro Abia, Right Honorable Rufus Umere Imo, Chief Mrs Chinwe Awara Anambra. From Southwest, Dr Edi Enyola Olafesop Ondo, Honorable Benga Anibogi Oshun, Honorable Fassiu Bakkeni Ogum, His Excellency Alaja Mutitad Ladoda Oyo. Mr Chairman, these are the names so far, ready. And I hope most of them are here or all of them are here for inauguration.
PDP. The Chairman of the BOT, Senator Dolph Wapara PhD, Your Excellency, the BOT secretary, Senator Ahmed McAfee. Great men and women of the BOT seated, great men and women of the nominees, the new BOT members in our midst, members of the National Working Committee, you are all welcome. I'm delighted to be in the midst of elders and great men of the party this morning. I am particularly happy that this seems to be like my first assignment as the acting national secretary. And for me to start with the elders, it means that the wisdom and the understanding I need to run the, the office for the short time, whatever happens, I have it from the BOT. I want to thank you very much sir for extending that hand of fellowship to the NWC members. Because I know that this is purely a BOT affair. But you have extended your fellowship to us, inviting us to be part of it. I'm here representing, I'm here representing the acting national chairman, ambassador, Ilia Damago and of course, the other members of the NWC. The BOT is the conscience of the party. The constitution provides great responsibility, big responsibility for the BOT to guide the party, the great party of Africa, not just Nigeria alone. We, the NWC are just here as your chief servants, I can see the chief servant over there. We are here as your chief servants, we are here to serve you. We will rely on your advices, we rely on your guidance. We want to assure you of every necessary support that the party needs to provide for the smooth running of the BOT office. We will also expect a commensurate response from the BOT in supporting us to refocus and redirect the affairs of the party to what it's supposed to be. I want to congratulate the nominees. This is a thing of joy, this is a day of celebration for all of them.
This is, uh, a day of celebration for all of them, a day that many of us as well yearn to experience. We, 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 we are looking forward to that time, that all of us, members of the party at all levels, will grow up in this party to become members of B O T. We congratulate you and thank you for making the N W C part of this occasion. You're welcome.
Thank you very.
Excited, and we thank God Almighty that we have gotten this far and that it's a new beginning for our party, a regeneration of the glorious past, and doing everything possible to ensure that from this moment on, PDP can continue to, uh, perform its duty as an opposition party across the country. New ideas, new people, new orientation, uh, with the quality of leadership and the heritage of the past, we can make Nigeria better than it is today.
What is the hope for the party in 2027?
Yes, it's an excitement for all of us to go back home and walk, and that's exactly what we're going to do. Some of us are known for standing our ground for the last twenty something years for PDP. We will not depart from that path. We will begin to be, to bring the glorious past back to our people, where you can send your, your children to school, where security will, uh, be, insecurity will be a thing of the past, and the economy and youth unemployment will begin to recede.
Defecting rocking the party is a great problem.
It's just. Ju- justice face. It, this too shall pass, and you can see that it's passing here. You are living witness to all the governors that we had issues with returning to be members of B O T. It speaks volume. That's the sign of the moment. We are going to return to greater heights, and you can trust us. Thank you very much, yeah?
Sir, but there was, there is a legacy you left in the party.
Yeah.
When you went to contest for a championship election.
Yeah.
You resigned.
I did.
Yes, but now people are saying that resignation is not part of the laws of the party.
We are all part of our past and the kind of education we received. I'm a Democrat to the core. There's no reason for me to hold the party down. If I want to go to another position, I must leave that position as directed by the Constitution. Things will work better. Discipline is part of democracy. Commitment is part of democracy, and we must adjust to the fact that we can act the way we, we want to act without considering the impact on the, on the population. For me, I do the needful, and for me, I'm loyal to my party. I can't take my party to court. I'll continue to serve it, and I continue to look for how best we can solve the problems in the party.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
To unifying the party, it shows definitely that PDP is still strong, uh, ready to take up and reflect to governance in Nigeria. Uh, we believe that that is possible. And from the chairman's speech, uh, what you could make out, uh, he showed some kind of, uh, not necessarily surprise, but some kind of excitement, that, uh, this high caliber of people are still in PDP and still very strong in PDP and no issues of defection yet.
Okay, now, uh, that's, defection has been a major problem that you people are facing currently. In fact, the country, as it, it's as if the country is going to a one-party state. Even for a newly elected Board of Trustee Members, how do you hope to address this amongst you?
Yeah, for me, that's a very big sign, even if you're a good biblical scholar, you know that even Christ had defection in his time. The Bible recorded that at some point, some disciples left him. So that is expected, and, uh, but it's a sign that you are nearer your crown, and that's what I believe. Uh, what it means in effect is that at this point, they are no longer needed in PDP for our next level. So we are, we are, we are strong and will take over.
So how about other, uh, members of the party that seemingly appear to be sabotaging the efforts to reform the PDP?
Nobody sabotaging the party, trust me on that. Nobody is. If there was anybody sabotaging the party, they are already out of the party. Anybody in the party as we speak, it's adding to the better value for the party.